...of the Coffin County Commissioner's Court. Today is Monday, April 15th, 2017, and obviously we've moved upstairs because of the remodeling of our existing fourth room downstairs, and hopefully that'll get started soon. I think they're working on the plans, and we're excited about having a new place to meet. So, we'll begin here with an invitation in a moment. If you are here to speak to an item that is on the agenda, if you will fill out a form, which are located over here on the table, and turn those in, we will be glad to hear you later in the meeting. So, if you've drawn me down with standing without a business, hope you're pleased. Probably thanks this morning for being here with us today, and if we make decisions that affect the county. We thank you for this special time of the year for Christians, where we celebrate your death and the risen Christ that we all as Christians understand, but gave your life for ours, that we can have eternal lasting life. Lord, we thank you so much for the blessings and the care and the love and the grace that you provide each one of us. We pray for our law enforcement, our first responders, and we pray especially for our men and women in uniform, that you will keep them safe. We pray for our great nation, and this country, our state, and this county, and keep us safe. These things we ask in thy son's holy name again.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have two flags on each side. One on one way.
Well, Mr. Hui is willing to put us through remedial pledge training if he thinks it appropriate.
All right, do we have anybody that has any forms that you turned in? Anybody like to speak to the court later on? Okay, we'll move on. I don't have anything in the way of the routine correspondence, but we do have a couple of people that we need to recognize or consider. The one is to present and acknowledge Coffin County Veteran Service Officer Certification. Robert Hunter, Robert, would you stand up and come up? Robert has hit the ground running, so to speak, our veteran service officer. Congratulations. He went over and beyond what was required for him to get this certification, and spent a lot of personal time and effort in getting this done, and so we really appreciate the work that he's done that is moving our veteran service officer. The numbers are increasing, the benefits are increasing, and he's really taking our VSO to the next level, so we appreciate that very much. And then next is Commissioner Jayden Allen, and he's going to get a certificate of appreciation, not approval, of appreciation, but a certificate of completion, has successfully completed the continuing education provisions of Article 81.0025 of the Texas Local Government Code. And Commissioner, congratulations to you. All right. All righty, we have next a report from here, Brian Beavers, who's been doing some reports from the Sheriff's Department over the last month. Been busy, I would think.
Yes, sir, we've been a little busy. You can pretty well look at it, our calls for service, our clearing rates are a little lower than that, and which we averaged last year was like thirty-nine, so it's just we have our peaks and valleys, like everything else. Bill's running good, we're at four oh six with an average, compared to one hundred and sixty-one thousand with federal inmates, and you can see the nine-one-one center, we're averaging about three hundred and forty-one calls per hour, twenty-four hours. Warrant service is still running the same. Catching dogs, you know, it's our cat population, we kind of picked up a little more cats this time, and then our commercial vehicle guys are doing a really good job, four hundred and forty-eight contacts, just to kind of give you a heads up on that. One of them will be leaving, it's going to D.P.S., and we lost two of them to help us get off. So, we're already in the transition of trying to hold that position. And then on the backside, you see all of our financial reports that's required by underneath the government code, and that's just telling you all our schedule, money orders, records, and other agency bonds that we collect, and how much money we collect.
Do you have a copy?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
It's a good report. They have a motion to accept the sheriff's report. They have a motion from Commissioner Allen, and second from Commissioner Hunt, all in favor say aye. Item number four is to have a presentation and acceptance. Robert, if you want to come on up, of the Coffin County Veteran Service Officer's report or quarter, in the second quarter is fiscal year 2017. And I just braged on you, saw it, got a good report here. Thank you, David.
Okay, so, good morning, gentlemen. Mr. Phillips had asked me to come together once a quarter, and Judge Woods said he'd like to do this once a quarter. So, this particular quarter, obviously, is abbreviated, came in kind of late in January, so the numbers are going to be a little lower, hopefully, than what we'll see next quarter. But as for now, we've taken forty-three, or created forty-three customer service tickets via telephone, forty-four customer service tickets via office walk-in, people that have actually come into the office seeking assistance. Of those tickets, one is still outstanding, we're waiting on that young lady to provide the documents, so that we can then submit her claim. Okay, we've had one, one request actually come in by mail, so for the quarter so far, or for the last quarter, we had eighty-eight total tickets opened and eighty-seven closed. If you'll look at the second page, kind of broke it down by month for you, instead of by the type, it's just by month. So, January, you see, we had twenty, February, we had thirty-eight, and March, we had thirty. And next quarter, when I present this report, instead of having each month broken down for you, I'll start relating it quarter to quarter, so you'll see what the comparison is from quarter to quarter. The last document in there is the global index from the VA. This is the document that they send out once a year that tells how much money and how many veterans we have and everything. Our section's on page four, highlight is it for everyone. You can see we have about seventy-six hundred veterans in Coffin County, and right now it's pulling in about sixty-three million dollars to our county is being distributed by the VA. The new, this is for fiscal year fifteen, the new global index report is not expected to come out until, she said, May or June, so based on how slow the VA moves, sometimes we may get it in July. And then on the side notes, I'm already, the office, we've already started the process for accreditation, and I will be attending additional training later this month. I got all the paperwork from Judge Woods to submit to the Texas Veterans Commission, so that we can begin our accreditation process. Any questions to him?
No, very good. Appreciate it. Robert, one question.
Yes, sir.
The Veterans Land Board, I didn't notice advertisements were there now, or accepting applications. If someone wants to apply, can they start with you, and you can direct them?
Absolutely. I will take care of anything. Some of your veteran services offices around the state of Texas will only deal with TDC related items, or their particular county, and I don't, I take care of everything. In fact, I've already taken, some of these people actually, some of these tickets were created from people outside of our county, because their county either didn't have one, or they're physically closer to us than they are to there, so they came to me. So, I will, they come to me for anything. If I can't help them, I will give them the help they need.
One other thing I want to mention is that Robert spoke recently as the Coffin County Leadership Council, did a very great job in a short period of time, that you had to present information about the veteran service officer. So, any of you have a group that you'd like to handle, students with, they does a good job, has a good PowerPoint, and so it would be, I think, interesting, the word needs to get out more and more, because that's one of the things I think you're finding, is people don't even know that they might be entitled to some current earn or service improvement.
Correct, or that there's even an office.
Oh, that's okay.
That's what we're working on the most. I've spoken with Commissioner Phillips, and I'm going to try to make it to each one of the commissioners' offices that they're sat like, where you guys are out there in the county, and set up a small business card stand, if you will, so that as people come in to visit you, they might be able to get that additional information to know about me.
I bet you the tax researcher leaves in here someplace, I bet you good people have to do that. They, the one thing that I asked, they asked, when we hired you, and I said, what I'd like to see is that we were good job applications, people came in, and they said, they kept talking about this one guy, John Kelly or something like that. We had like four or five different people mention this one service, Veterans of Coffin, and they were all people from Coffin County and around here, and I thought, why don't they know this guy? I said, what do I want? I said, within a year or two, I would like if somebody comes in, I would like everybody to know you, like, seem like they know this guy. And I believe Robert's on the right track. I believe they're gonna, I believe they're really gonna, and I appreciate the job you started out with, and keep going. So, if you have a service club, or a fire meeting, or something like that, that's a good opportunity for Robert to come and speak.
Thank you, sir.
You made a very good point, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next item is to, item number five, present and accept the Coffin County monthly activity report to the Fire Marshal's Office, Coffin Works Department, and the Environmental Enforcement Department, that's on the Fire Marshal. Did we vote on this? Okay, we need to vote on acceptance, Robert, to the board, acceptance. Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Phillips, second, all in favor say aye. Then we can start.
I'd say the three departments behind the cover, first one would be Fire Marshal and Department, and the second page would be Fire Marshal, and the last page would be Coffin Works Department. Environmental wise, we've had a significant increase in complaint calls that have come in. That's not the number of calls that we have addressed yet, addressing as we can, but that's the number that is coming in. And then public news and comments are also significant. Everything else is staying pretty much in line, the Fire Marshal Department, Fire Marshal, brush, hay fires, grass fires, there was a decline due to the weather that we had, but that's right away. Everything else is pretty much going along the norm on that, not to bend near to many citations. And then our revenue, we generate with the revenue for the Fire Marshal's Office, permanent business down at the bottom, some months and then totals. And the Public Works Department had an increase on maintenance contract renewals, just go around, and threefold along with that, kind of the maintenance exception reports throughout the year. But if you complaints come in, we're handling, usually more than we're ready to, you know, we've got two tickets to that. Not yet, of course, for the month of March, but we do have four come up this week, several this week. There'll be about eighty bags filed in Texas. Deposits, definitely.
Questions for me?
Pretty important, they, we say those are your, I mean, take it.
Public Works?
Public Works, I guess, oh, yes.
Are you on Public Works?
Yes.
Open for complaints, complaints that we received throughout, you know, that, after, within the month of March, we actually received that many complaints, most of which are on homeowners, some of those are against contractors.
Okay.
And then the closed complaints, that's a carryover from the follow-ups, you know, we have to provide the thirty-day notice additionally.
Right.
So, we're always behind on closing complaints, do stay ahead.
On your environmental enforcement, I believe you have one officer that is out on extensive help.
Yes, he's back home, but I would imagine it's still going to be a few weeks before we see him, you're working, pretty short-handed.
Yes, sir.
Ran into a little problem there, and it's a couple of tinky things, that's mine, I believe I addressed each one of them individually, and just said, you know, I know if complaints come in, bear with us, I'll have to contact your office, we'll try to explain it, but we'll get to it, we can.
Doing good. Any questions for him? No, I'll enter, thank you, for doing a good job and giving us this report, it's very good.
Thanks, sir.
But I have a motion to accept the, Commissioner Phillips makes that motion, I don't follow those pieces. All righty. Next item is to discuss and consider approving the settlement of agreement number one for USAID intersection improvement project between Coffin County and Alphany, the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. This is the work that will soon be going on over at the USAID and one forty-eight intersection, you know, terrible, and that hopefully will, not hopefully, but it will hang with U-205 upcoming, and so John has sent this and recommended that we approve it, coming from our county bond election, and it was for this that we're budgeted for, or that was mentioned that we're using for, so. Terry is not here, I'm sure he's up to date on it, but anybody have any questions? No? Really? I'll, any kind of motion to approve, Commissioner Hunt makes that motion, I have a second, Commissioner Phillips seconds. All in favor say aye. Those vote. All right, thank you. Next is from Steve Pooey to discuss and consider acceptance of TCEQ, EPC grant 2016 for the purchase of multi-gas monitor, electronic personal radiation detectors, detectors, and UAV in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Steve?
It's been about, almost a year and a half ago, when this came up, and the state authorized an additional four million dollars for this grant program, and so we submitted a grant, and it just recently came to light that we were chosen, and the equipment is for things that we're going to use countywide, but most especially along the Interstate twenty corridor with the startup of the whip program, or transuranic waste, which is radiological waste going up and down Interstate twenty from, like Savannah, Georgia to New Mexico. And the personal radiation detectors will be distributed to agencies along that highway, so that if something happens, we have a way to know whether they're going to get irradiated or not. My office does not currently have a multi-gas detector of any kind, and we wanted to get one so that would be on the upper tier and monitor, so we can go out and assist departments, fire departments, police departments when needed, so just asking for you to authorize us to go forward with this grant and accept it.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Does training come with that?
Yes, please.
That is, that kind of waste goes through our county, which I don't think anybody particularly wants it to go through our county, but it does, and so it's a way to detect our citizens and certain our first responders as they go.
This is just a handhold, though, right?
Oh, this is hand-held, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
But we wouldn't know it, that's kind of no.
Even the canisters and stuff, they're basically, we'd have to, and stuff, we've asked patients for the one I'm doing, Dallas County.
It's got to be, we don't know what's going on, do they?
No, I don't have a clue. Thank you, all, if you had a comment or a question.
Steve, is there matching for, did that ring?
No.
Do we have to pay for it, and then get reimbursed?
That I'm not sure about, it's been discussed either way, I will let you know before we proceed.
Any other questions? Have a motion to accept, somebody? Recommendation from the ELC, and a motion from Commissioner Allen, I have a second, Commissioner Phillips seconds motion, all in favor say aye. Those vote. Okay, thank you very much. And our next, Lisa, you want to come up with this one, item number eight, to discuss and consider continuing the county's membership in the public power group through 2022. This is a program that we've wanted to, and has for many, many years, provides electricity rates to our county, and if you've noticed, it's pretty urban county organization as well. So, Lisa and I met recently with them, they're going out to bid now on a new program, Lisa, I'll let you take it from there.
Well, they have, they bid this out, so they, whenever this company bids it out, they're going to get the co-op, so we just get to take advantage of them doing all the work. There have been some other companies that have contacted us and wanted us to look at some of their programs, but they've had a lot of negative comments and stuff on listserv and all this other stuff, and Powerful, they presented numbers, real numbers, they've come and met, and we've already been using them, already have got to take advantage of significant savings so far.
It's a very good program, and it's operated by urban counties, it's under their umbrella, so they make sure we do a good rate.
I think the rate is supposed to go down.
Yeah, it's actually supposed to go down, and by buying this far out, we take advantage of rates in case they do go back. Okay, do they have a motion on this? Have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, they have a second, Commissioner Hunt seconds, all in favor say aye. Those vote. Thank you, Lisa. Item number nine is to discuss and consider a thirty-six month lease for John Deere, six seventy-two G motor grader for Precinct One, Road and Bridge. I believe this is, Lisa, you and Mr. Hunt have been talking about this, have you?
And I felt to put on there that this would be utilizing by board contract, just like on number ten, the second one. It's, he's discussed it with Karen and myself, and he's just needed some new equipment.
Thank you, great. Thank you, you have one or two that are inoperable, you spend a lot of money getting them.
Yeah, we got one back going again, so we've got three with this rental one, but the other one was still parked out, and so it wasn't worth investing the money back into. So, actually, Precinct Three was gracious enough to, they actually had this one in house to lease it, and they just brought it across the dividing line, brought it to the southern part of the county, and then let us kind of get on their deal, so they were gracious enough to do that, to let us keep, keep going. And of course, they got a 2017 now to lease instead of our 2016, but it was awesome, I said we do that.
Do you want to see anything talk air and follow the history of that?
So, we just swap it out. And I tell you what, the scary part is, we, the underwear's like twenty-five years old, and it's just healthy, it's getting with bacon wire and stuff, so if we keep working them like we're working them, we got, like, just.
You're keeping them all busy.
Oh, yeah, they're making all the time.
All righty, what's your pleasure?
A motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Hunt, we have a second, Commissioner Allen, any other discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those vote. And number ten is to discuss and consider the lease of the 2017 six seventy-two G motor grader for Road and Bridge Precinct Number Three, RDO equipment utilizing the by-board contract, number four two four one four eight, Senator One, we just accepted, it's a year new.
They could let one get something better than what they have.
Anybody have any questions about, about that? I have a motion. Mr. Allen makes a motion, I have a second, Commissioner Hunt seconds motion, any other discussion, all in favor say aye. Those vote. Thank you very much, Lisa. Item number eleven is to discuss agreement for extension, for expansion between Coffin County and Walmart Village LP, which was approved in the Commissioner's Court on March the twenty-seventh, 2016, a little over a year ago. Karen, or Rebecca, have anything like to add to this? I think it's acceptable, plan a tour.
I don't either, other than just reading through that TDC letter on the coff, religion chapter.
They, they withdrew this at the city level, and they notified us that, you know, that it's not going to pay plus. We went ahead and put it out there, just so it'd be a matter of record, so do I have a motion, not an E-motion, but do I have a motion to throw away this agreement between the county and Walmart? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, you have a second? Second. Commissioner Allen seconds motion, all in favor say aye. Those vote. All right. Item number twelve is to discuss and consider approving the tire deputy Albert Michael Kelso, purchase of a gun, a Glock twenty-two gun, fifty percent, Larry Martin's baguette which is shooting eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents. I believe this was sent through by Sheriff Beavers, you ready to add anything?
Yes, sir, once again, enough to have your time, it's like years, and I'm totally thinking, you can offer, buy weapons, pictures, and that's the last question we have to leave.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Phillips, I have a second, Commissioner Allen, any other discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider interlocal agreement, there's, I think we all know that there are ones that talks around the police department, so the part of it with TECO, getting their license and stuff, they've got to have a permit to Sheriff's Office, and housing their prisoners and all that. I've got a copy of, which we need to do this, County Copy, so I got a copy of one, changed its fit up, run it by legal, they've looked at everything, they're happy with everything, only shoved to the judge over the period, picked it up, I think they had a special meeting and signed it, I gave that copy to the judge, so I think we're all happy with it, we are happy with it, which it is, their class C, they're going to have to pay thirty dollars a day for their inmate. If they wind up going to.
If they go to our jail, they don't have a jail, so if they bring their class Cs, they're going to be charged for that.
And the reason for that is, is that the county winds up paying for the expense of those class Cs if they stay in jail.
Oh, exactly, because what, what happens in municipalities, they wind up writing the tickets, they don't pay the tickets, so then they get a warrant, they got to pick that inmate up, they got to bring him up, they're not going to pay the fine, if they get picked up somewhere, they're usually going to pay the fine, but if they have to go pick them up, they're going to set the fine out, so then we've got to pay for their meals, medical and all this, and that's what they're covering for their medical, you know, if we've got somebody in there, and they've got major medical, they're going to pick up a bill, we shouldn't have to pick up that bill, so they're a small class C warrant.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Karen, I think you're in the better of looking, so we, y'all are okay with.
No, we're okay with it, Sheriff, that is homework, and that is a really good agreement to start with, so we'll happily do it.
Yeah, all right. Have a motion. I think Commissioner Allen makes a motion, Commissioner Phillips seconds, all in favor say aye. Aye. Those vote. Next item is item number fourteen, to discuss and consider approving the Sheriff's Office to apply for a text doc grant for clicking. Next item is item number 14 to discuss and consider approving the sheriff's office to apply for a text off grant for clicking. Particular, two weeks in the month. Sheriff, you want to help us with that?
Yes, sir. Text off is a process. We've never done this before. We're some kind of pro party that kind of keeps our officers in a part time. We can pay them overtime with this money allocated. It's not going to be 28,000. They want us to have eight officers every day for that. There's no way I can do that with us being charged, but we've cut it down. We'll probably get about 10,000 of them. But I think it's a good program that we need to be part of text offs excited because they've never had anybody part of it in this area. So we want to get, get part of it and try to shut down some of these grants to help the pro law enforcement trying to enforce some of the stuff to make it safer in our county.
Have a motion.
I've already, Rodney Chief has already talked with Karen, wants you to be able to set my own line out. It's not, like I say, it's going to probably be around 10,000, so it's 28,000, I think, if that's mine.
Depending on personally. Alright, anybody have any questions? Have a motion from Commissioner Phillips. Do I have a second? Commissioner Allen's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, item number 15 is to discuss and consider a variance request for direct locks fronting since all lots were 100 feet. At the open line and streets are private at the edge water addition in Coffin County precinct number four. I believe this is Commissioner Allen came back with additional information.
We did. We got a letter back from Jenny. And everything is saying.
Jenny Prezak.
Prezak. And where the lots are on the toll sacks or for pie shakes and they're over water and that's their work is the lot. But to get them in there, they're going from there and then look at, I give up the middle. I think you got 65, 75 foot if you follow some of them instead of 100. But other than that, it's not an issue. I recommend allowing them to have the breaks. My recommendation.
Basically, what we have is, is county interveners disagree with the variance. But if Commissioner Allen is fine, that we really don't have an opinion, to be honest, either way. It's county interference, it's one thing based on subdivision relations. If they may go into it, it will be a, it will be streets that will be private homeowners associations. The county will never take over the main, we won't start accepting that in the county road system. So it will be pretty much a game for community. That's a private situation. People mind those lots and know that. So I don't, I don't think it's any thing that's harmful to the county. It's just for the record, we just want to state those things so that we have another subdivision that wants that variance. But they don't have exactly the same facts. And I think it's important that you make that extinguish, extinguishment, so they know why we would agree to this type of variance. But might not agree in another situation.
It would be by subdivision, in other words, it would be just.
Not a blanket.
Just on that one.
Just on that one piece of land.
And not everyone on the pie shake is the same distance, right? Some of them, some of them will extend it by.
Some could be more than others. Probably with land laid out, get it on the water. The way the shoreline lays out.
Yeah, I mean, it's a private deal.
Kind of a common sense.
What I'm just trying to say is, if it was a subdivision maybe somewhere else in the county where it was laid off in front and there wasn't an issue of it being a private gated community that's governed by homeowners association, then we might have a different opinion. But under this set of facts, where it's gated community, private entrances, the roads are strictly owned by homeowners. People mind these lots, understand the pie shake, they're giving up some of the frontage in order to be on the water. I think it's a, it's a specific set of facts that it's worth accepting and agreeing to the variance. But I'm just trying to be clear that it might not be an all situation.
We're not sending a president to, to run any word up.
Right, that's what I'm trying to.
We're not doing that.
Right, I'm trying to make sure that that's on the record.
Any other discussion from anybody? Do I have a motion to approve? I make the motion. Have a motion from Commissioner Allen and a second from Commissioner Phillips. All in favor, say aye. Goes the vote. Item 16 is to discuss and approve an optional service for diabetic supplies and wound impaired supplies. This is from Deb Rain.
Good morning, Arielle. Good morning. Well, it comes to my attention that we are paying more for diabetic supplies. I mean, for our diabetic patients to go to the hospital because of not being able to afford the supplies. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But if you'll look, I've listed out, I went last week, I searched around and went to Walmart, went to C V S. Little, my mom and pops gave me some information. It comes down that Walmart is the cheapest. And what I want to do is provide these supplies to my diabetic, not be one of the three prescriptions that they're approved for each month. But if you'll notice that it is cheaper for me to supply this to them than for them to not be able to get the need, the supplies that they need. Because if a diabetic has to go into the hospital overnight, it can cost anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000. If they have to stay three or more nights because they're trying to get them controlled back to where they were, it's going to cost anywhere from $32,000 and up just for the neglect. And most of the time it's due because they don't have money to get the proper supplies to check their insulin. For a glucose monitor and landset device, I will do it yearly. That would only be $14.84. The monthly supplies would be $9 for the strips. For the landsets, $1.48, which comes to a total of $10.48 a month. So we would be making tremendous savings. I did have a patient that was on my program. She went off in December. During that time, she ran out of funds. Our daughter, you know, couldn't help her anymore. So she wasn't able to get the supplies she needed. So she was back at the hospital. She was in there for three or four days. So it's very important that we supply these for our patients if we can, our clients. I think Commissioner Hunt, he, me and him kind of discussed a little bit and he agrees with me. Being a former paramedic, that it's really important.
Can you go on the street, you see all this stuff happen, you make runs and it costs the county money to, just for somebody to still send it. It's a big deal for them and hardly just one little bit. They'll call the ambulance or go to the emergency room. It costs us a lot of money in the long run for a small investment. You know, the big deal is the pipe man, she has to do for these people. She's willing to do that.
That's right.
Do you have storage facilities to keep this stuff?
Well, what they'll do is they'll need to go to Walmart. I had talked with IPM and I asked them if there was a way we can specifically tell our diabetics to get their supplies. They have to go to Walmart and they said, sure enough, we sure can. So they've got it set up. If it gets approved today, they're setting it up to where the diabetic, diabetic supplies will only get approved at Walmart.
Any?
Any Walmart in Terrell, Flori or something.
Alright, Phil, do you have any questions about this? Yeah, I appreciate you spending the time doing this. I'll entertain a motion if you, if anybody has any questions. Commissioner Allen makes a motion. Commissioner Phillips' second. All in favor, say aye. Goes the vote. Okay.
Jessica, there is one thing though, since we've done the option shares that we've designed this for the state.
Alrighty, number 17 is to discuss and consider approving an R F P 17-03 for replacement of county Road 4116 Bridge located in Precinct Four.
This is great. We all here in Rayco over a year ago. We got some FEMA come out and award us some money. We got the bids. Lisa had that?
We said one bid.
One bid is all we got.
But we solicited?
Yes. All of all.
So what was that bid?
That one.
Seventy?
Yeah, well, seventy-two, what is it, seventy-two?
Two thousand something, you know.
And Steve, this all comes from?
Not all of it.
No, no, no.
Sorry, it's 70,200.
Seventy thousand.
And we got a little 41,000 from FEMA. For them, so. Really be out of our budget.
Budget.
Yes. We put the bridge back together.
Alright, do anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Allen makes a motion. Phillips' second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, goes the vote. Number 18 is to discuss and consider proceeding the payment of procurement by non-competitive proposal guidelines to secure business R F P 17-04. Repair and or replacement of Hickory Tree Lane Bridge located in Coffin County Precinct Number One.
This one's a little more complicated because we received no bids on yet.
Yeah, Jackie, I don't know what he said to the guy, but he wouldn't bid on that.
Steve has saved the day on this because apparently there is, we follow procedure by the local government code. And he has circulated the memo that allows us to bypass this since we received no bids. And go ahead and award a vendor, which the same vendor still does want to, to do the work.
Actually, he's, he didn't read down far enough. There was two bids, one right along the other. Saw the first bid and he didn't catch the second bid. So he goes, really, I didn't know. Yeah, so I mean, he wants to bid on the, on the bridge, but we already went through the time period. So Steve came in and is objecting and stuff, leasing is objecting. So there's things we can do to make this happen.
You know how hard it is to get FEMA to open their mouth and speak from the paper lock? Which they did. Never, it's never happened before, before you have two bridges in one county and one being bid on and the other one not. But we got them all centered and got them to give us some guidance and that's what we're trying to follow.
And so this will be done by the same vendor, which will probably be a good thing.
We haven't gotten a bid yet.
Oh.
Yet. We'll talk to them and wait to tell them to go and give us a bid.
So you still not received any, anything from this company?
No, no. You have your phone number? Oh, I've talked to you. Oh, I've got a bigger up on my computer. Jackie did this to me.
What's the name of the company?
Curtis Allen.
Allen Bridge.
The original bid came.
He said he already made a bid on it before and they said, don't do it. Matt, Matt, okay, we won't go there.
Let's get this through and then I'll send you what I got.
Yeah, send him so he'll know if he's going to give you another bid.
He knew, he knew the, he knew the bridge well, you know, he had this temporary stuff. He wanted to go on with it while he was there and he was told not to, so that's where we're at right now. It was about 2015.
This is a 2015, that's where it's at.
We're just following up.
Okay, since we don't have a bid, how should we handle it?
That's why Steve has circulated the memo stating, I put it in your packets, stating the no bid and attaching the other information that came from FEMA as.
So basically what we're doing is we'll just go to the next step and then we'll get a bid.
We'll go ahead and bring it back. I, I mean, I don't know that it has to come back to be approved since it's supporting any dollar amount. I guess we do. We push it probably.
Alright, so do I have a motion on item number 18? Commissioner Hunt makes a motion to approve, proceed, second, second, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number 19 is to discuss and consider approving the contract from Coffin County. An Axis contract incorporated to use Coffin County vacant property at the intersection of Center Street and East Main Street.
Yeah, and that's just basically we're going to park our equipment while they're doing the work to put them on tour down the main street. We said that they'll replace the, anything that they do, took pictures, we've taken pictures, rented to the DA's office. They're trying to say now restore, do the thing again. This is a year-long project for the city of Phoenix. What it is? Yeah, it's just sitting empty. Grace, you talked about adding some material parts, even if we'll add to the parking lot. So we might, might be back again, except the material from the city more. That'd be nice.
Mr. Phillips, what I talked about was just making sure that access and insurance, like they insure the property. So that we have any access or anything happen while we were using it, that they will be in the home and not the county.
Right, can you get a copy of that?
Yep, we will. He will remind me.
We started work on this project.
I'm junior.
Up in Flori and we were already having meetings every week with our downtown business owners, letting me know about the impact that's coming for that. And Axis seems to be a good company right now, the contractor that's working on actually lives in Flori, so.
Yeah, remind me to, you know, make sure Lance gets his copy of the interim.
Sure.
But we don't forget.
Alright, do I have a motion on item number 19?
I have a motion.
Commissioner Phillips makes a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Allen's second's motion. All in favor, say aye. Alrighty, item number 20 is a report from the DA's office concerning the monthly financial report from the collection improvement program office.
Good morning. Basically, this is the Coffin County projections and bring the program monthly report. The cover sheet is for March. The supporting data sheet's off for March. But I also included behind the March cover sheet, the February balance sheet, so that if anybody wanted to use that as a comparison. And this month, basically, they collected about $62,032.22. So it's moving right along. Last month it was about a little over $50,000, so that seems to be the range so far on the collections. Does anybody have any questions?
They're back at home now. I think they're back staying there, functioning and so forth. That's good. Anybody have any questions from the board? Do I have a motion to accept this report again? Do I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips, do I have a second? Commissioner Allen's second's motion. All in favor, say aye. Goes the vote. Item 21 is only wanting to discuss and consider approving a notice for public hearing ready. In reference to the dissolution of Coffin County Development District Number One. And we had information on that at this last meeting and so I think this is the next step that we need to take.
Pursuant to the statute, what we need to do now is have a notice of hearing order signed. And so what we're doing is we're setting the hearing date for that petition that was accepted last time, the dissolution of Coffin County Development District Number One. And we want to set that hearing May 8, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. It'll be a public hearing during commission of court. And so we're just asking that county clerk or the judge sign the notice of hearing, notice of the public hearing.
That's the date of our next commission. At what time did you want to have it?
At 9:00.
9:00.
Basically, what I'm going to do is I'll be working with the placemaker to make sure that we get the notice published and the correct notice sent out to the different interested parties. So that we cover ourselves on that, so that we can have a public hearing.
Makes sense.
Anybody have any, any questions?
Do I have any motion on that?
We just need a motion to accept the notice of hearing.
Do I have a motion from Commissioner Phillips? Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunt's second. Motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes the vote. Next item is, thank you very much for your work on this, ladies. Next item is, thank you very much for your work on this, ladies. And the next item is to discuss and consider line item transfers. I believe you have a copy of those, or mail to us previously.
You have any questions on your line item transfers, as submitted?
Do I have a motion to approve the line item transfers as submitted by the auditor? Commissioner Phillips makes a motion, Commissioner Allen, second's motion. All in favor, say aye. Next item is to discuss and consider the claim for payments. We've also received a copy of that earlier. And anybody have any questions concerning the bill that the DA are in the.
Your claims for payment are a million, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Anybody have any questions about that? Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to, from Commissioner Phillips, do I have a second? Commissioner Hunt, second's motion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Phillips, and a second from Commissioner Allen, all in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.